Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. I just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, oh God. You've been so good and you've been so kind. Lord, we ask you, Lord, continue to bless this city of West Memphis, oh God. Continue to cover it with your blood, continue to fill it with your love, continue to wrap it in your mercy, oh God. Look on this council body as a whole, oh God. Lord, you cover us, oh God, encourage us. Let sweet communication abide within us and around us and over us, oh God. Lord, we thank you right now for our mayor, oh God. Continue to lift him up, oh God, continue to encourage him, oh God. As he make decision for this city, oh God, as we on a flight to fly, God. Lord, we thank you right now, oh God. You've been good and you've been kind, oh God. We bless your holy name this afternoon, oh God. As we go through these meetings, oh God, you be in the midst, oh God. You cover us, oh God, encourage us, God. Show us what to do and how to do, oh God. As we walk, as we talk, oh God, let us be about your business, oh God. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Mayne standing and place the flag, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Constitution, which is standing on my nation under God, individual with their attention to the Constitution.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes, here.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Monday. Thank you, sir. Counselor Murray. Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Pulliam.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Willis.
Here.
Ten out of ten present.
We got a quorum being present. We're gonna move forward. Need a motion and second to approve the B A openings for utility department on their 2020 bucket truck.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? Alright, that passes. What's there in the corrections to the minutes?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? It's approved. We got OB, Ms. City Attorney?
An ordinance to authorize aldermen and members of the city council to purchase services from Charles Suter Jr. Doing Business As Suter Construction Company, Inc., and for other purposes.
I get a motion and second to approve the rules.
So move.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? Place on the third reading. City Attorney?
An ordinance to authorize aldermen and members of the city council to purchase services from Charles Suter Jr. Doing Business As Suter Construction, Inc., and for other purposes.
And a motion and second to approve.
So move.
Second.
And a discussion.
Yes, what kind of, what will he be doing? I know he's a construction company, but since we've placed it on the third reading, evidently it's something that we need immediately. Is he working on some of our buildings, city buildings or something like that at the present time or want to start?
Yes, he does work on the airport and other businesses. We need him, but currently I think he's doing work at the airport.
Is he related to Ms. Suter, the manager out there?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to have some kind of a waiver saying that he's authorized? Is this what this is?
Well, this is what this is right now. Yes, ma'am. This is what this ordinance is. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye? Oppose? It passes. Ms. Clerk, will you give that ordinance a number, please?
Yes, Mayor, that number will be 2561.
2561. New business, council report.
Mayor, make motion, read R101 and O2 by title only.
Second.
Can I get a second?
Second. Yes, second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? Also, will you all be adding O3?
Okay. Also make a motion, we add that and read it by title only, please.
Get a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose?
No.
Oh, you call the roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Kat.
No.
Counselor Crum.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Pass.
Counselor Holt.
Yes.
Excuse me?
He said yes.
Yes, thank you, sir. Counselor Hutchinson.
Yes.
Counselor Monday.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Murray.
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed.
Pass.
Counselor Pulliam.
Present.
Counselor Willis.
Yes.
We got six yeses, so it's added to the agenda.
Well, we, it's not unanimous. It's not, it's gotta be unanimous, be added to the agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Exactly. So it fails, going to agenda, because it takes a unanimous vote. And we had four council people, they voted. So, but we will have it on the agenda for the next two weeks. And they'll have a sign, just for the discussion of having to make it on the agenda.
I just want to make, our request to be put on the agenda for the 19th.
I will sign it and make sure it's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I advise you to, what information that the council is asking you for, please provide them for they have a couple of weeks before the meeting to look at.
Yes, I mean, so if I, if I might, just, is there any information that you would like to have from us before the next meeting that we can provide to you?
Let me, let me ask you something of you. I'm sitting there looking at your map. And you got a map sitting there with a ditch running back behind that church, all those churches, right? There is, there is a ditch back there behind the churches. Why don't you get, put your tower in that open field away from those houses and stuff? Get it out in that open field instead of on top of the churches. What'd be the big deal there?
I contacted Guaranteed Loan and Banking, they said they weren't interested.
Okay, that's good enough.
They own the property.
Okay.
So is there any specific information that we can give to you? I mean, the contract information, I'll have more of that. Anything else that you would need from us to make you comfortable or give you information about Vertical Bridge?
I sent everybody a copy of the email that you'd sent before about your management's positions and keeping your properties up. The copy that you gave us will get handed out to everybody today before they leave the chambers.
Okay.
If they need anything else, we'll definitely get out of it.
And I have, I have a letter from both the churches.
Okay. What is, what's the specific objection of the?
They don't want it, they don't want it in the neighborhood on top of our churches. You know, these things do put off radiation and stuff. They do have a, a, a chance of hurting someone. So you don't need them right on top of the lot. Get out in the field where most of them supposed to be. I mean, most of your areas, they're, they're asking you not to put them on top of housing, and you're right on top of the housing area.
Just say that this has been approved by the FAA and the FCC, this location.
Well, that's, that's fine, too. What does EPA say about it?
EPA, there's no required approval from the EPA.
But they do have, they do have a negative about them.
We do not believe that, no.
Well, okay.
Thank you, sir. And also remember, in two weeks, that council meeting is at 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Resolution?
Yeah.
The council's at 4:30.
Yes.
4:30.
Yes.
City Attorney, R1?
Resolution of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, authorizing the execution of a change in terms agreement to that certain lease purchase agreement previously executed by the city on November 19, 2019, authorizing the execution of any and all documents related thereto, empowering the mayor with the authority to execute the change in terms agreement on behalf of the city.
I get a motion and second to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Right, I do have one thing, Mayor McClendon, if you don't mind. I was reading the ordinance, and we are not to exceed a certain amount. Do you think we may be coming back asking for a little bit more money in these terms?
Ms. Tori?
I don't believe so. Originally...
Who am I speaking to?
Tori, Finance Director.
Tori.
Hey, Tori, hey, okay. You don't believe so?
Uh, no, ma'am. Originally, there was a 5% contingency, and that contingency was cut to 2.5, which is why we're having to increase the bond by this amount.
Okay, so this is, I know there's a little bit of wiggle room left as far as the amount of money is concerned. I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, it's still $400,000 available, but I don't foresee us having to come back and ask for anymore.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye? Oppose? It passes. Ms. Clerk, would you give that R1 a resolution number?
Yes, sir. That resolution number will be 2246.
2246. Alright. Ms. City Attorney, O1?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for 1598 East Broadway, permitting an automobile dealer used auto repair garage in a C2 open display district.
Alright, I think that we have the individuals who's over that property that's here. The applicants, okay. Yeah, I'm sure.
I think this is the one that I was talking about tabling until Mr. Lucas's office got it straight with the property owners. So they were not, they're in there operating already, so are you all operating now out of that building?
Hold, Ms. Mohammed, let me, let me get them to come up so they can answer your questions through the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, since I'm not there. Please forgive me.
Alright. Here go the operators, the applicant representatives. Will you give your names?
My name is Cletice Abareto. I'll speak a little bit English, but I got my friend here in case I need help for translating.
I think she needs her to come up and translate.
Your name, sir? Your name?
David Bransfield, property owner.
Just for the record.
Martha Cortez.
Okay. The council, Ms. Mohammed has a few questions. Ms. Mohammed?
Right, thank you all so much for appearing on city council. I'm sorry I'm not there in person, but I can't see you. I don't know if you can see me or not. From my understanding in pre-council meeting, we understand that you're already inside of the building operating, and I was going to ask that this ordinance be tabled until Mr. Lucas's department can get everything straightened out with you all, because if you have not been approved, then there's no way that you should be in there operating at this time. Are you operating out of the building right now?
Ms. Mohammed? Okay, at the moment, she, they're not operating. What they do is only Thursdays, they do a VIN verification, but there are no sales or purchases or anything like that there.
So basically, what are you doing in there right now?
Um, they only do VIN verifications for the salvage titles that, from cars that were previously purchased before all of this, when the license was, when everything was still active.
Mr. Lucas, is that in violation of what they're doing? Even, they're, they're not operating as far as working on the cars. They're just verifying VIN numbers and things of that nature. Is that, is that out of compliance for them? I want to know, because this is gonna help me decide on whether or not I want to not table this, ask for it to be tabled.
Councilman Mohammed, they, they do not have a right to occupy that property. They do not have a certificate of occupancy. So there should be no activity going on on that property at present.
Based on what Mr. Lucas has just stated, I'm gonna ask that this ordinance be tabled until things are straightened out as they should be?
This is not an everyday thing. This is like a once a month thing they do.
But he said no operation at all.
Let me, let me ask this, Ms. Mohammed, before you make that ordinance, Paul, actually, Ms. Mohammed, are you asking that we table it into two weeks?
We can table it for two weeks, and maybe that will give them a chance to just vacate the building, stop doing anything in there until we get everything all straightened out with Mr. Lucas's department, and he can come back and let us know whether or not it's okay for us to go ahead and, and go forward with the ordinance. Because I see the planning commission has already approved them, but as far as the ordinance, giving them the special use permit, I don't think we should do that on today.
Because I think, I think what they got to wait on...
I know it's just the first reading, though.
It's the council to approve it, then go forward.
Let me ask you this, David, I mean, were the lights already on or?
No, no, what happened is...
Well, I think where the whole mix-up is, when the lights came on, the lights, and then it ever been on, and then they went and pulled the paperwork, right?
They don't, they don't have the utilities there.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying, okay.
Yeah, there's, currently, there are no utilities at the site, far as, to my knowledge.
That's why we're doing this now, is because the person that did have utilities on, they wanted to transfer the name to Letty. She don't speak very good English. She didn't know. She let her utilities lapse. And then when she found out she needed to go to city hall to do the proper things to do it, that's what it's got it to here. And so they've been just operating with a generator for this time. But it's all, this cream's been a part of 25 years. It's just, it just wants to be a different owner on the name, that's it.
Well, we can do this. I mean, of course, this is the first reading. I mean, they just need to do the activities. So, you know, I'm just saying, we get it all squared away. Because we're not trying to run the business off. It's just that, you know, we got to be in compliance, because if we don't, I mean, we have a problem down the street. And we just trying to make sure we're not running into the same thing. So, we can do that, and it'll still be on, be read, but it's just give them an opportunity to see, you know, the work in the building, and then by the time we get it passed, maybe, you know, everything be okay.
Well, I spoke to the Planning Commission Chair, and they were, they, they gave you the approval to, to move the business into that location. And they're, they're saying that they don't foresee any issues. So, but, you know, like Paul was saying, that, that we don't have it all cleared up yet.
See, until they get the certificate, they cannot, they're not supposed to act out of it anyway, you know.
So are, are you all asking, just leave it on the agenda, let it be read first time, you all don't operate no more until it gets approved in, what, another two weeks or four weeks? Ms. Mohammed?
No, that's not, I'm not asking that. I'm asking for it to be tables until they get out of the building, get everything straightened out with the, with the city hall, and then we can come back and do the ordinance. I don't want them to move out either, but we have issues, and if, if we allow this one, then others will be coming. And then if we tell them no, what, what are we gonna end up? We tell others who come behind them. No, I don't want them to be ran off. I'm as councilman Pulliam, I just want us to be in compliance, and Mr. Lucas said they should not be occupying the building at all, not even with a generator.
Yeah, Ms. Mohammed, I think what we're saying is that they can't do nothing until you all get it approved first. And they will have to stop doing any work.
But they are doing something, they're in there working, they're checking VIN numbers, they're, they're occupying the building. Mr. Lucas said that they shouldn't be occupying the building at all. Of course, planning commission has given them clearance for the, for the permit, but at the same time, they shouldn't be in there at all. So there's no reason to even leave this on the agenda. Bring it back once everything has gotten cleared up, because you have other people who wanted to do the same things, and we've told them no.
Ms. Mohammed, I, I understand you are absolutely right. This is what I want you to hear what I'm saying. Their next step is to get the council to get it, get it approved. They can't do nothing until you all approve it. So if you take it off the agenda for two weeks, which I'm saying they got, they gotta stop doing anything in that period, because they don't have a CO. But in order to move forward, it got to go through you all three readers, not to read it out one time or read it out three times. And then they can move to the next step, but there's no next step until they get the approval from you all. So tabling, the only thing it does is prolong it an extra two weeks until you all make a decision on the next agenda, or just read it out, let it be read the first time, or next two weeks, and then second time, then the third reading would be in another two weeks.
I just have one.
How will we know they're not in there operating?
And, and what, my question is, what, where did you all get the, the understanding or the okay that you could go in and start operating? Because that's my concern right now. You're, are you understanding what we're saying? And what, who, how did you begin operating without the special use permit?
Um, she was partners with the person that was there before, and when everything was, when she is the one that stayed with the business, it was gonna be transferred by name, but she didn't know all the procedures.
That's my concern. Are you understanding what we're saying?
Yeah, because everything was in somebody else's name, but with the same actual dealer name. Now it's just her name instead of the person that was there before, the same dealer name. So everything was supposed to stay the same, except her name.
And you all were under the assumption that she could continue doing business when she was not supposed to be in or operating?
Yeah, that's what she...
Is that the understanding?
Yeah, until, until the utilities lapsed, and that happened, and then when she tried to get everything up to code, that's when she found out all this was going on. And right now, nobody's operating in the building. It's just today that they take the cars and pick them up, but nothing, there's nobody working inside, nobody's doing anything. There's no generators there. There's nothing once she found out this was going on.
You just told me you guys were operating with generators, so...
No, no.
Sure did, I heard that, too.
They were operating with generators before they found out what was going on. After that, there's nothing. Because when, when she couldn't get the utilities back on, that's when she found out, and she stopped everything. You can go look, everything's empty.
They bring their cars onto the lot to title it. In Tennessee and Mississippi, if you buy a car to do the title purposes, it takes six months. Arkansas is more eased on their laws. So people in Mississippi and Tennessee bring their cars to an Arkansas licensed dealer, they run the paperwork, they drive it in the little ruck the next day, they get the title that day, they can handle their paperwork, and they get paid a fee for doing it. They only do it one day.
So I, did you, did, Mr. Bastio, are you working with them, and did you, are you, did you give them the, the assumption that it was okay? I'm just asking because you, because you're speaking on their behalf, and what, what goes on in the life...
Are you looking for a finger to point at? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, actually, actually, I just want, I mean, because you're at the mic, and since you're on the mic, I want you to hit the mic and answer the question.
What your role is.
Alright.
Yeah, exactly.
There's, there's a building, there's a building with four bays. It's a building, and then there's a concrete lot in the front. The concrete lot in the front is what we're occupied, and we're not have nothing to do in the building at all. The building's shut. So the, they were coming in one day, bringing their cars in, state trooper does VIN verifications, and they leave. Nothing's on the lot, is what they've been doing for one day.
But they don't have, they don't have a permit to do that. And who's getting, my, from what I'm trying to get understanding is, who's giving them the okay that they can even do that with no permit to do that? That, that's what I want to know. Where are they getting this from? You don't know?
Okay, thank you. Because that's operating, even if it's one day a week. I make a motion that we table it until, even if it's for two weeks or a month, until they can get all this straightened out, and that they discontinue even that one day of operation. Because Mr. Lucas has already said that the building should not be used at all, not one day, not half of the day, not two hours, but it shouldn't be in use at all at this particular time.
Well, could, could we say this, Ms. Mohammed? Could we say this? Even if we leave it on, what we can do, I'm quite sure Paul, working with code enforcement, if they still down and occupying the building, then code enforcement go down and give them a ticket. So therefore, the next two weeks when they come back, I mean, we either read it one time or two time. I'm just saying to make sure that y'all, everything is clear, because you have to cease business like ASAP.
Yes.
And so we can't send code enforcement down, which you end up getting a ticket coming to court. So I mean, I'd much rather see it left, and then, I'm just saying, in two weeks, read it again, and then, you know, just make sure that y'all in compliance.
That's working with somebody right there.
That's what I call working with somebody, so you know.
Well, council, what are y'all wishes? What is the, the motion? Ms. Mohammed, you all, whoever, make a motion.
Well, it's, it, it would be the same thing. If we table it for two weeks, it'll come back up. If we leave it on for two weeks, it'll come back up. It really doesn't matter to me. All I'm concerned with is that we just have a playing level still for everybody, because there have been some who wanted the same procedure, and we've told them no. That's my concern, is just being fair to the, all of the constituency of West Memphis. Ma'ams, do you all live in the city of West Memphis?
I don't.
I'm sorry, do you all live in the city of West Memphis?
No, but the property owner does. He owns several properties in West Memphis, including two car lots. And they're all, all above grade, with sight first, everything you want that the city wants. Both of these car lots have, to the T.
Well, for the sake of time, for the sake of time, can we just make the motion?
Yeah, what, what, are we just going?
Read it this one time, and then next two weeks, if it's not in compliance, then we just two way to...
I have a motion to table it. I have put a motion on the floor to table it.
Okay, we have a motion to table it. Do we have a second?
I'll second it just for the...
Okay, we have a second, the second motion to table. Call the roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Kat?
No.
Counselor Crum?
Pass.
Counselor Harris? Yes. Counselor Holt?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Mohammed, me, Monday, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Hold on, Counselor Monday?
Pass.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Murray?
No.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Pulliam?
Pass.
Counselor Willis?
Pass.
Well, the motion to table fails, so we back at the ordinance. Ms. City Attorney, would you just read it for its first time?
Are you ready?
Are you ready? Alright, well, it has been read for its first time, and it'll be back on the agenda in two weeks for a second reading.
We simply ask that Mr. Lucas verify over the next two weeks, no activity transpires there. If the council chooses to read it out in two weeks, you'll get a CO. If they choose not to, then you'll have to wait another two weeks. Again, Mr. Lucas will have to verify there's been no activity whatsoever.
That's fair enough.
And then we can go have the final vote then.
We can have two votes then, maybe?
We'll read it out for you.
For twice? Okay.
It'll be up to the council if they want to in two weeks to read it twice, or just read it once. But it'll be definitely determined by what Mr. Lucas tells us. If there's been no activity, they may be more receptive.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you. Alright.
Thank you, folks.
Ms. City Attorney, O2?
May I make a motion that we table O2 indefinitely?
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? It's tableed indefinitely. The O3 failed, so it was not added to the agenda, so we're gonna move forward for mission request? I need permission for the mayor to sign a five-year agreement with State Systems that was tabled on October the 15th, 2020?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
I just clarify, this strictly is for the library.
Yes.
It's for their system there.
They, we tabled it because they had some changes to make last time, and I looked at it, the changes have been made that I requested, so...
Thank you.
All in favor, aye? Oppose?
Aye.
It passes. Alright. Permission from the Airport Commission to request funding of $150,000 to rehab hangar number three. Um, I need permission...
So move.
Second.
End of discussion. Counselor Crum and Ms. Counselwoman Mohammed, support or measure? All in favor, aye? Oppose? Alright. Planning Commission recommendations. Can I get a motion and second to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? Aye, it's approved. Committee reports, Public Works?
Yes, sir. Public Works met on Tuesday of, Monday, I'm sorry. Was it Monday or Tuesday? Excuse me, I'm out of school, and I've got my days messed up. We met on November 2nd, Public Works did. We had a really good meeting, not a lot was said. In recycling, we had 27,780 pounds of recycling. We had one E-Waste. At the time of the meeting, the front-end loaders report, we had two operational, one was down. Rear-end loaders, there were five operational, one was down. Grapple truck, there were three operational, and now there are two are down at the date of this particular meeting. We also discussed meeting with the West Memphis Police Commission, and which we did, to get police officers to help curtail some of the violations that's going on on the weekend. Mr. Phillips works five days out of a week, he does not work at night. And we were just soliciting the Chief Eddie West in the Police Department to help us ticket people or warn people when they're in violations. Also, the Public Works Department did make flyers to put on people's garbage cans that are left outside of the road after the garbage has been picked up. Mr. Phillips has done a lot of footwork trying to place flyers on as many as he can, but he's just one person. And we also asked the Police Department if they could help us in that situation as well. Chief West did let us know that because of COVID and various of things, that personnel is not, they, they don't have as many police officers really working now as they did, but the ones that I asked for were basically the cadets. But the ones that I asked for were basically the cadets, the ones that are in school. I was not asking for just the regular police officers, but the cadets that were in school. So after everything is cleared up and, and, and everybody's back in place, Chief West is most certainly willing to work with the Public Works Department to try to help us get some of these, uh, things done. Our engineers report is, everything is basically on track as before. The South Loop Extension, um, road contract has been approved by R.D.O.T. And a request for signature from the mayor would be requested Thursday, in which we've done that. Ten Mile Bio, still waiting on clearance from corrections made to the thirty percent of the plans. The Lear Street Building Report, R.D.O.T. will be ready for bidding in the spring. The Reading Street Bridge Report on Bridge Improvement Programs Through MPO is set for design in twenty twenty-three. The Rich Road Bridge Report, we'll request obligations on twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen infrastructure funds during the next Policy Technical Committee Meeting, which is due to meet November nineteenth of this year. The twenty-twenty Ovalay Project should begin this week with Chris Con- Contractors beginning on Vanderbilt. The twenty-twenty Drainage Rehabilitation Project bids will be taken up on November nineteenth, twenty twenty, and will address flooding in different areas of town. So at the next meeting, we should have some kind of beginning date for that construction. Had a really good meeting, and I just want to congratulate that department, Rhonda, Mr. Bonner, uh, Mr. Phillips, they're doing a really wonderful job, and of course, all of the, uh, sanitation department has, Ms. Robbie, uh, Reverend Clark, Mr. Odell Slaughter, just everybody. Thank you all so very, very much for working with us and trying to help keep everything up to par, and that does end my report. Hello?
That concludes your report?
That does conclude my report, yes.
Okay, you had no far, no far. Uh, Police, Mr. Murray? Ms. Murray, you force Police or you going to report?
We met, I'll report out, we just met yesterday.
Okay. Did you say Airport? Ms. Crum?
No, we met the third Thursday.
I know, the chamber was changed, A and P.
Next.
Met.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Uh, Parks, Personnel?
Personnel, I'm going to report on the nineteenth.
Okay. Well, the budget?
Budget was, we would be working with Mrs. Perry to get all the September data entered. Uh, what we'd like to do is in two weeks, present that along with some budget amendments that have already been approved by the council, just simply need to be approved on the council floor, so we can start our year-end prep, uh, getting ready for audit.
Okay.
Quick question to the budget, I mean, when are we gonna start? I'm just saying, setting up our meeting for. Oh, you passed now, okay, okay, okay.
I'm sorry. I requested that the bu- the budget stuff be due back on the eighteenth, so we can get it to you all.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll have about a thirty.
Did I overlook any commissions? I had no appointments, no presentations. I had one announcement. I'd like to congratulate all of the winners of this past Tuesday night, which is, uh, our new City Clerk, Councilman Pulliam. Looking forward to a new start and working with the clerk's office. Uh, no, I'm not true. Uh, Councilman Monday, uh, uh, Councilman Mary, as well as Councilwoman Hutchinson, and Councilman Cat, uh, who was already elected back to our City Council. Look forward to continue working with you guys, and congratulations. I suppose that was the best election I ever had, 'cause my name went on the ballot. Yes, two, they're signing up as citizen requests, uh, is Shara Purdy here? I talked with her once, but, um, is she, I, I don't see her here.
Mr. McClendon, I think she decided not to go through with her request today.
Okay. Alright.
I'm sorry, Mayor McClendon.
Yeah, so we are, if she, she contacted us and she want to get back on there, we get her back on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have second, Mr. Bowser, Johner, he's here. We ask five minutes, get your name and your address for the record. How you doing, Mr. Johner?
Uh, good afternoon to Mayor McClendon, to you, the City Council. It's a privilege of being here, I'm Basil Johner. I'm a property owner here in West Memphis. My mother and I own the, um, we are the majority stakeholders in the five-hundred block of South Twenty-Fifth Street here in West Memphis. Um, my purpose here, uh, uh, let me say this, let me thank the mayor for when I first acquired the property, for his assistance in helping me with that property, um, of going, moving forward. Um, uh, my purpose here is that, as you know, that the West Memphis School District put a brand-new multimillion-dollar school in our area on S.L. Henry, and I felt that as the property owner, on Twenty-Fifth Street, I took it upon myself to talk to other property owners around there about trying to revitalize that area of making that neighborhood look like it did when I was a child growing up in there. So having said that, my purpose is simply a case of taxation without representation. Um, I've been working in that area, um, cutting trees and things, and in the midst of refurbishing property there as well, there were complaints that people had been trying to break into some of the homes around there. So after doing my little survey, and we called the police there on, on occasion, it was determined that, about cutting the trees, the shrubs and things off the fence lines, and trying to make it look better, where people can see and be, and establish a more apparent neighborhood watch. Uh, in doing so, um, I ran into the code enforcement, um, which we talked. Then I got, um, a complaint, I guess from the city. I came to Mr. Lucker's office. We rectified that because it was said that we had workers down there that needed privileged license. Well, these guys were just common laborers that I paid out of my pocket from, they worked a day, they get paid a day. When you pay them, they may show up two days later, they may show up next week. However, we were trying to get the job done. Uh, I also came down on another occasion to talk to, I believe, Ms. Robin, just to find the rules. Uh, it was brought to my attention, an ordinance was passed that the debris had to be so wide, so tall. Um, I thanked them for that. I went back to the area, started doing it. I also was told that you didn't put, uh, the, the city did not pick up debris on a empty lot. Okay, that's fine too. But in, I was thinking at that time, when I had put it on the empty lot, in order to keep the street from looking so horrible with everything spreaded out, since we had the empty lot, the truck can make one stop, pick up everything, and just move on. But to be in compliance, when I started cutting my things around my, our property, my workers were like, yours don't look good if we don't cut the neighbors. So I talked with the neighbors who were adjacent, they agreed. I cut their pro- I cut their limbs down as well, and I spaced it all out on the street in front of, uh, on properties where houses were. It was approximately September the tenth, I received a call from Mr. Bonner, who is the supervisor of the Street Department. We agreed, I met at his office, I think on approximately September the fifteenth. After talking with Mr. Bonner, uh, after being accused of trying to circumvent the system, I explained to him I was only trying to work within the compliance of a city ordinance of putting debris in front of houses rather than an empty lot. After a brief meeting, he and I came to the agreement that if I would pick up that, uh, debris that was already out there on the street, the remaining, uh, debris that I had to finish with, put it on the empty lot. Did, it didn't matter how wide, how high, put it on that empty lot, he would pick it up after I contacted. So I, I, in compliance, um, I, I went to the, uh, had guys to pick it up, went to the landfill, here are my receipts, just to show that I was trying to work in good standard, uh, good standings with the city. All I asked was just to do what you said you were gonna do. Where I'm from, or how I was raised, when you meet with men, you look them in the eyes, you come to an agreement, a man's word is his bond, and you do what you said you were gonna do. I somewhat felt like it was a bit of harassment that I keep getting when all I asked is be fair, give us the representation in the southeast side of town that you would do anywhere else. Because Mr. Bonner called me, uh, then he disputed, well, I told you I'll pick up the big stuff, not the little stuff. And that wasn't true. And, uh, I tried to go through what I call a chain of command. I spoke with one of my aldermen directly, um, I felt like it was an issue. I shouldn't have to bother the mayor about something what I thought was petty, that you have supervisors in place that can make a common sense decision. In summary, um, I think that it's important that I ask you as the council, when we consider putting people in supervisory positions, that let's look at hiring people from our area who pay taxes, who have a stake in our community, in our city, that understand the people within this community. When you have people outside who spoke of the people in Ward Five in a very derogatory and negative manner in which Mr. Bonner did, I took issue with that. Uh, I thought it was ve- very out of order, even to say it to me. So therefore, I'm asking you, the council, if you would, I don't know what the rules are, um, I feel like coming to you is like trying to make the mayor do something. But you are the legislative body.
That's right.
So, I'm asking you to require the Street Department to pick up that debris that's been out there for three months now. And it's all about trying to make the city look better, but if the city doesn't join us as property owners, how can we fix the community? They threw tires, I paid money out of my pocket, with tires, I think three dollars a tire one man charged me to get old tires off the lot. So I'm just asking for your help and your support, um, because we are taxpayers too, and I, and I think we try to do what's in the best interest of the community. We try to stay in compliance of the city and just try to get along with everybody.
You should have talked to the councilmen's over there in Ward Five, which I'm one of them, and I've never heard of this.
Well, um, I talked.
That's, that's why we are councilmen's, and that's why we have wards. If you got a problem in the ward, you're supposed to go to your council member for help.
Well, I, I, this is, this is the thing, Ms. Harris. I spoke with Mr. Monday, it lit. Um, one Saturday, when I was sitting out there in the yard and you passed by, that's what I was out there doing, wait, you know, waiting on guys to work when we were cleaning up. I did not have a long meeting with you because after speaking with Mr. Monday about it, and he advocated on our behalf, and nothing was done. Uh, it, it just turned into a he say, she say.
Let me talk to you back, I'm in a zone. I'm, I'm talking about. I would like to say this, I mean, I commend you for coming forth and talking about the issues, but at the same time, we just went through, uh, months of revamping our ordinance, dealing with that. And at the same time, if we have an ordinance saying, do not, then we can't violate the ordinance. That's just like us violating the law, and if we violating the law, I'm quite sure, I mean, there, there is something that says if we violating the law, search is, is it non- season of office? I mean, if we, if we have a law sitting there that's saying, or ordinance in place.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, the thing of it is, we just sit up and work, I mean, the engineer, uh, the Public Works Engineer who used to be, we worked time and time, some months on it, right?
Yeah, it's because of the equipment, the, uh,
Yeah.
our hydraulic arms can only hold so much weight, is the reason we put a restriction on, how much do we pick up?
And that's fine, Mr. Pulliam.
Wait, 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 okay. And I'm saying, there are times, I mean, we had, uh, Keep West Memphis Beautiful, that we do sometimes, I mean, from time to time, allow people to put certain things out. We, and, uh, we just haven't this year because of the COVID. But normally, we set that time each year that we just go around and pick up everything. And, and we plan, as soon as COVID go, we plan to do it again. And so we can't just, and pretty much a lot of this, which it bags us up when we stop, start picking up certain things, the people have to come off their route to start picking up trash, that, that, uh, norm, they have a norm, uh, route that they have to stay on. So, I mean, of course, we stopped, well, one time we tried to let them come in and pay for it, but it got, whereas every contractor, every person was doing this, so we had to put something in place.
Well, I understand, and I s- I worked within the confinement of the ordinance. And when I worked in the confinement of the ordinance, after meeting with the supervisor, I left with the impression that we had an agreement. I only did what he asked me to do. So when you do what the supervisors ask you to do, what other recourse that I have other than talking to the City Council, or, uh, you know, me, me, you, him going back and forth, that's not gonna get anything done. I, I understood totally. When he's, when the rule said, put it so big, so wide, and when I put it out there in front of the property, then you say, you trying to beat the system. I, you know, I don't know what else.
And Mr. Mr. Johner?
No.
Excuse me, now, is, you put it in front of your property, all of it is placed in front of your property, in front of the houses that you own?
Yes, ma'am. And.
Okay, I don't, uh, and so the, Mr. Bonner said that you were trying to beat the system just because you did, you took it off of the vacant lot, in which we cannot pick from a vacant lot, and all you did was just put it in front of the properties that you own, that you pay taxes on, that you pay garbage fees for, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I think, I, I, I'm just one voice, and everybody's been shooting me down on everything else I've said today, so I guess I'll take one more sh- shot. But I think on behalf of Keep West Memphis Beautiful, I'm, I'm going to ask that the Street Department go and clean all of that up, especially if it has been out there for that long. I know it looks, is it a whole lot on each property, or just a grapple pool, or two grapple pools?
Well, after we had agreed, the agreement was me to go pick up all the debris in front of the properties, and what was left, put it on the empty lot.
Let me, let me hold off and stop this conversation, because we're starting to get close to a personnel matter, and, and we don't need to discuss personnel matters with regard to supervisors in an open City Council meeting. I can appreciate what you're saying, but, but when we start getting into potentially discussing a personnel matter, it's, it's something that needs to go into an executive session. So I, I've heard your complaint, uh, I just don't want to talk about a particular em- employee.
Yes, sir, but let me rephrase that then. After the agreement of putting, of picking up the debris in front of all the individual properties, I was told to put the re- the remaining debris on the empty lot, and the city would then come and pick it up. So I, I was in compliance, I did my part, and all I'm asking the city to do its part. And that's.
Well, let, let me, let me add this, um, let me talk to Bonner and see what was going on, and look at the council, they reported to me the mayor, not the council, so it'll be a decision if it's not breaking the law that the council has set forward. But let, let me see what's going on. I mean, I'm just hearing about it, it should probably should have came to me, 'cause I'm at the top of the food chain.
Well, I just really thought you were busy doing other things for the city. So I, I just said that I wasn't gonna bark your time down with it again. Um, and I do appreciate the time that you've given, uh, and the consideration that you've given me and the other property owners on the southeast side of town. Thank you very. owners on the southeast side of town. Thank you very much, and, uh, you all have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Bowser.
Do you have a question, Mr. Holt of me?
I don't think he heard you.
I, Mr. Holt, I, I saw him hold his finger up. Thank you.
If there's anything else, I'd like to make a little statement.
Sure.
All right. This has been a extremely tough year with the co- with the virus that we've had, and our employees have done a heck of a good job standing on the job, doing their work. So I'm gonna recommend, and hopefully we can give them a reward by Christmas.
Uh, Mr. Holt reached out to me. I also talked with the budget chair. Uh, I talked with the finance director as well. There's some confines in there that, but we'll talk more. Let, let's talk more about it with the council and the budget chair and the finance director and go from there.
I agree too.
All right.
I hear one other thing. I mean, we're about to close.
Yeah, yeah.
I hear one other thing. Uh, the citizens of West Memphis, they actually, they actually turned out to the, um, Civic Center for voting. Um, uh, you know, I'd just like to thank A and P in the city of West Memphis for pushing to, uh, have it there in the city. I mean, the citizen was really excited about it, and who knows what's gonna happen in the future. But I just wanna let you know that they was really excited about it, which I'm glad, oh, you heard and talked as well. And so, you know, I, I'm just glad that we took that step to do that for our citizens. And again, I would like to thank the citizens of West Memphis for actually, um, giving me an opportunity to serve there next City Clerk in, uh, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, I'd just like to thank all that's supported me. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may, add to this. A lot of people came up to vote. They were handicapped, and that walk is a long way from where we currently have it posted. Could we ask for permission for those two weeks to allow them to park in front of the building so that cut, walk could be cut by in half?
Sure.
'Cause some of them really struggled to make that, that different, that distance up.
That'd be fine.
Now, I know it says no parking, but maybe for those two weeks and two years, we can do that differently.
I know, uh,
There's some things I was gonna bring back to A and P as well. You don't just say it for weeks and kind of like look at some stuff.
How good and successful that early vote went here in West Memphis. I can't see them going back to the old way. Can't see them, so. Yeah. Was there anything else? Anything else on that? You all got, you all got four years, for one thing, and the, the newbies and the constituents as well. Y'all wanna, I wanna share it too. So, uh, I wanna give a big happy birthday to Ms. Patricia Lane. She just turned twenty-five today.
Say twenty-five.
That's right.
She turned twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah. If, if there's not anything else, can I get a motion and second?
Go move.
All the favor by?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.